At this time, we will hear from Principal Bowman from Revelon Elementary School.
To Board Chair Madam Olmer, Board Members, Dr. Washington, Superintendent, to Executive Directors, and to Revelon Elementary School faculty, staff, parents, visitors, and friends. I say good evening again. Welcome to Revelon Elementary School. We are the home of the mighty, mighty, mighty typos. Where our motto is, "One team, one dream, educating students for America tomorrow." There you go. Every day we come to work, we say it, we believe it, we have our kids to say it, it's important that we all are singing the same tune. As you will see tonight, we really believe in our motto, and we really believe in our students, and we really believe in what our students can do here. This year, we embarked on a new adventure. We are now officially a primary school, yeah. We are pre-k through second grade, we have the babies, thank goodness, we have the babies. But it's a hard job.
Yes.
We have to teach them the number one thing, which is to read.
Yes.
We started off this year with knowing that goal. That was our first primary goal, was to teach children how to read. Dr. Cash met with me prior to the beginning of the school year, see she's smiling, prior to the beginning of the school year, and she said to me, she said, Renee, there's one thing I want you to do. She said, we have a sense of urgency in Orangeburg, that is, to get our children to read, and that is your goal for this year. I thank you for giving me that challenge, Dr. Cash. However, we got quickly to work, and we started off this year with our challenge, which is to teach students to read. We provided professional development for our teachers, so that they are able to meet the needs of our students. The number one thing that is a great factor in the classroom, and the only thing, which is the teacher. It's important what the teacher knows. So we wanted to make sure that our teachers had the right type of professional development to meet the needs of our students, to help them to grow, and help them to learn how to teach reading to children, but also how to help children to struggle through and learn those techniques to teach themselves how to read. Research says that if children, young children, are going to learn how to read, that you have to provide them with a lot of experiences, and you have to do that fun, exciting ways. And because we have the babies this year, we had fun, didn't we not, faculty, that one?
Yes!
We had fun, but we taught, and the children learned, and that's the most important thing. We started off this year with something I call the uniform pride session, which we call the ups, and that's our expectation for our students, to get them ready to know what it is that they ought to do for the year. We told them that they are to learn how to read. We had t-shirts made up on the back of the t-shirts that just said, the children are going to learn how to read, 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 and read some more, because it's important, it is very important to the livelihood that they learn to do that. And as you can see, during our up sessions, we have some activities for our children, which teach them different literacy skills, we teach them how to read, not only do we teach them how to read, but we also teach them how to do math, do science, because all those things are important, important for them to be a great learner. We started something this year called Smart Academy. The Smart Academy is for every student in our building, pre-k through second grade, and it means start making a reader today. Start making a reader today. We wanted to make sure that our children, of course, had those experiences from pre-k all the way up to second grade, that they know that reading was important. So every week, every week, and every month, they have a reading challenge, and we challenge them to read and read some more, and when they do what we ask them to do, and they meet their goals, what happens is, we have what's called our smart parties. And so during our smart parties, and you can see here, my media specialist there, she comes up with some very creative things for them to do. She said that she wanted them to learn about the international world, so she had them to create sushi using candy. So they had to read the information and to create sushi, and it was really good, I must tell you, I had some myself, it was really good. But our children are enjoying doing those type of things, and they are all reading while they're doing those things. During a literacy week, we provided various activities for our children, and they like a lot of hands-on, so we have to make sure that they have those hands-on experiences, so that they have things that they can talk about, and they can write, and when they're reading in the classroom, they have experiences in which they can fall back on. We had a reading, we had a reading, and as you can see, our kids were all over the place. They could choose the gym, the cafeteria, it doesn't matter where, they had a spot to read, and they had to read for a sustained period of time. And our teachers got on board, and everybody in the building read for a sustained period of time, and they got to keep the book that they read. So quite often, what we do do is that we give kids bags of books. Every nine weeks, our kids receive a bag of books. Two of those books we select based on their reading level, and then the other books they get to select. And so they tend to really enjoy it, and if you can see there, they're in line waiting for their books, they go to the table, they pick out all the books that they like, it's a wonderful sight to see. During Read Across America Week, our teachers, and as you can see right there in the middle, how cute they are, our teachers got involved with a lot of different activities. We want to make sure that our children are also, not only reading, but well-rounded when they read. And so we allow them to go to different places, as a matter of fact, this is a picture of a classroom university where they attended the Read Across America activities, and three of our, I think, three or four of our children were highlighted on the floor during that time, and they had a great time. Here you will see some more pictures of us doing some things during literacy week, and doing Read Across America activities, where our children had to design masks, they had to talk about the mask, they had to write about their mask, they did an art project using their mask. So we try to infuse reading and writing as much as possible. This is my friend in the white shirt, Mr. Thomas. Thomas, we had a celebration for our kids for reading, and Thomas was my partner, and he was a part of the celebration, because he read his number of books, and then when it got to the dance part, Thomas said, yeah, I'm glad y'all finished talking, because it's time for you and I to dance. So Thomas and I danced. We have a variety of persons coming into our schools, we have community partners and readers, and we're so proud this year that we have even more people wanting to come into the school. We have persons from the Milllands Reading Consortium coming in, and they are the proud district winners of the volunteer of the year, and they do an awesome job with our children. Some of our, well, all the children that were in, that's in the reading consortium, actually went over to the county library on yesterday, they gave them lunch, they had their activities set up for them, but those persons come diligently, three days a week, three days a week, they come in and they read with their children, and if the children are here, they want to ask me, where's my child? Where's my child? We also have the Zetas who come in, my sisters come in, and they love to read with the children. We also forged a partnership this year with the music doctor. We have Ms. Murdock who comes in, and she kind of fell in love with the Clash this year, and she said she wanted to take them home, but by the end of the day, she said, no, I think I can read that. That was a good comment, that was a good comment. We have also, we try to work on kids' character education, we have the Boys.
Thank you for your job well done. We understand that when we laid the challenge on you and your faculty to take care of our babies, and to educate our babies, that it was a tall task. But I think you guys took it, and you have shown to us, and to this county, what you can do when everybody's working together. So I say to you, to the faculty, to the staff, all of you are grossly involved in this process, and when I come by and I see that from everyone, it makes me proud to note, and gives me a sense of confidence that all is well at Revelon. And again, thanks to each and every one of you for your job well done.
You're down here from your sister, Ms. Harson.
I was trying to get you, but Mr. Stevens said everything, so I'm just gonna piggyback on some of the things he has said. Thank you, staff, you're doing a good job. I pray for you on some days. Hang in there. I noticed you have a Boys Mentoring Program, do you have one for girls on this one?
The only program that we currently have for the girls is the Girls Circle, and we don't, we don't have one that does all that the Boys Mentoring Program does, but the program that they do have really meets their needs, because the girls do get to talk about their feelings and their concerns, and they do get to learn about how to be a girl, and about how to, how to have a relationship with their mothers and with their fathers, because that's so important. And so Dr. Bowman does a super job with that, as a matter of fact, next month, they're going to have a coming out show, and so I invite you all back to see that, the little princess is coming out.
Let us know.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
And my next question is, how in the world you dye eggs without that?
Well, you use shaving cream, and you use food coloring.
What?
Food coloring.
Oh, I've been using food color for years.
You see, I'm shaving.
I showed you something up there, food coloring like that.
Shaving cream, and mostly we use vinegar, but you don't have to, you shave it.
Thank you so much, Reverend Harson. Have a test, continue until we get to the sweet time.
Mr. Page followed by Mr. Jenkins.
Congratulations, and you, the pastor died off.
We'll try it at the next town.
He turned on a little on the end, but it's so important that the parents get involved in the reading process.
Yes, sir.
They need to read home, read in the kitchen, read in the backyard, and the parents, they understand that reading process, and it's just you teach all the other things, teach the parents also how important it is to get it done.
When we do literacy nights, we do, we have, every literacy night is focused on reading. We do give parents books, we teach them how to read books to their children, the teachers do many lessons with the parents, showing them how to help their child read, so we try to do as much as we can, and as I said, every quarter, I give them bags of books, because I want them to build their personal libraries.
Please let us know, girl, when the little princesses come out, because this time.
Use your mic, Ms. Harson. You all use your mics. Use your mic.
Oh, thank you. I said, please let us know when the little princesses come out, because there's so many activities going on now, and the board, we from this school to that school, this school, so please let us know in advance, so all of us wouldn't be at one school at the same time.
Yes, ma'am. Definitely.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I too wanted to commend you and your staff for doing a great job, and I have one question, you mentioned that every nine weeks, the kids get a book, a bag.
They get a bag, they get a bag of books.
A bag of books.
Yes.
Do we have people in the community that donate these books?
Actually, I use some of my Title I funds, and I purchase bags of books for the children every nine weeks, so when they leave, they have at least five to 10 books every nine weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowman. Oh, excuse me, Ms. Farlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Bowman, thank you very much, thank you very much to your staff, and thank you too as well. I have one question. What's the student population here?
Three hundred and forty-three.
Three hundred and forty-three.
And growing.
And growing. Thank you.
Thanks to you and your staff.
Madam Chair, Dr. Bowman, there are also chickens that lay colored eggs. Don't believe me, just stop crying.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Now we're here from Vice Chair Bernard Stevens, legislative, oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, fellow board members, the General Assembly has circled the wagons, and there are a lot going on. As most of us know, April 10th was the crossover date that no bills from the House will go to the Senate, or from the Senate back to the House. There were a number of exciting pieces of legislation that came out of both Houses, and just wanted to share a few of them with us tonight. S-709, the Education Subcommittee amended a bill that originally mandated fire inspections in every school. Before passing the Senate, the bill was amended in its entirety to require school boards to adopt a policy and program for school facility fire and safety, including inspections before the beginning of 2019, 2020 school year, and to change required monthly fire drills to school's safety and security drills, with no fewer than six of the drills to be fire drills. The House further amended the bill to strike the Senate language and direct that its study committee be formed to determine the feasibility of conducting routine fire inspections in every school. It was further amended to require the following, direct schools to conduct at least two fire drills, two active shooter drills, and two severe weather, earthquake drills, with at least one of each drill conducted each semester. It also directs the South Carolina Department of Education and the South Carolina Law Enforcement Division to develop guidelines, age-appropriate materials for conducting active shooter intruder training before August the 1st, 2018. Also directs the South Carolina Department of Education and smirks if consultation from mental health professionals develop a grade-appropriate active shooter intruder drill instruction videos that must be shown to all students at the beginning of each semester. Wow, that's quite a bit. The Subcommittee also gave third readings to S-812, a raffle bill headed to the school house. That bill with value of non-cash prizes and raffle conducted by nonprofit organizations for charitable purposes, and that bill number is S-812. Also, one final bill, House Bill 4596, gave a favorable report to a bill establishing a waiver process for schools wishing to provide a competency-based education program, and that bill is H-4596. And Madam Chair, I could go on and on and on, but I think that's enough for the night. Any questions?
No questions for Mr. Stevens?
Well, I, Madam Chair, if I may, as, I think about three, three weeks ago, there was a local legislation that proposed a nine single-member district as the beginning, as it was at the very beginning, the first bill that came out. That bill went through second reading in the Senate uncontested. The bill, per Senator Matthews, will be probably introduced once again on tomorrow Wednesday. It appears though there's not enough support in the House at this time, that that bill would probably die from the, from beginning, becoming long. So that's the update on the nine single-member districts.
No questions, we thank you, Mr. Stevens. At this time, we hear from Mr. Dr. Bowden, Finance and Operations.
Madam Chair, Dr. Washington, here with the board. The Office of Finance has prepared for the board's review of the month of budget status reported in February 28, 2018. Turn to page one of that report. See under Local Revenue, we received $7,500,000. Basically, this was just an allocation of, it didn't tie back to our allocation, it was just money that was given to us until they figured out the actual allocation. Under the Local Revenue, we're feeing LOA, and 25 to 5 meals, still haven't received any revenue as of the end of February, however, I will tell you in March, we did receive revenue, and I'll share that with you next month. See under the Interest Revenue, we continue to generate a good deal of interest. The month of February, we were on $28,518 to date, we have a surplus in that account, State revenues are pretty much as we anticipate, look on page two.
Mr. Bowden, excuse me, can you use the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Can you hear?
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. On page two of the Revenue Report, under the Education Finance Act, we received $1,265,796. And we went back on the 135th day and looked at our EFA submissions, and we picked up under the add-ons for, I guess, academic assistance, but anyway, the money that we earned now will be more close to what was budgeted, so even though we lost some children, we were able to correct some numbers at the 135th day report, and our EFA revenues should not be as bad as I shared with you during the work session. For the month of February, we reported $10,321,231. Our expenditures are pretty much as we anticipate at this time of the year. Page, um, page 12 of the report, we spent $5,618,136, and about 40% of our budget remained, which is pretty much as we anticipate at this time of the year. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Ms. Leighton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bowman, is any of that money retroactive, or does it just start now with the add-on? Did it go back from the beginning, or did it just start last month, or February?
It cuts back to, our numbers are on the 135th day, so everything up to the 135th day, you get funded for.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Leighton? Put your mic on. Did I say another name? Mr. Stevens?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bowden, I was looking at categories of state revenue and the bus driver's salary. There's, appears to be a little surplus, or have that category not caught up to itself
With the category, if you look at what we have, we had $629,000, they aren't pre-budgeted. Through February, we collected $413,000. Look at it from a city standpoint, we're a little bit behind, let's talk about 9%, and I'd like to look and see if that amount is adjusted from what we originally budgeted, but I know they do it based on route miles, and I really think our route miles have decreased, but I'm not sure tonight, I can check on it, get back with you.
Okay, well, I'm hoping that $200,000 difference don't remain, but please give me a follow-up on that, sir.
We still have March 2, March 8, June 2, we have about $200,000 that'll come in, so it should be fairly close to what we have budgeted.
Ms. Leighton?
Thank you, ma'am. Can I have a question that relates to what Mr. Stevens just asked, and I just happened to think about it, in thinking about missing days of school, like for the inclement weather and that kind of thing, and I realize that they're paid by the hour, and it may not be as much as I'm thinking, but how do we handle that with our employees when they miss days of work, and I mean, is, I mean, how's that handled throughout the state? I mean, is that a...
Well, what happens is, bus drivers are paid on a daily basis, based on the number of days they drive, so they drive for 180 days. If you make up the days, then they get paid. If you forget the days, then they don't get paid.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Bowden. Vice Mayor, on that interest revenue that we have an addition of $160,877, what were the plan, that interest revenue, what are the plans, what do you plan on spending that money on since initially, but since we have so much additional money, what's the plan in reference to spending those additional funds?
Well, we don't really have a plan for spending them. We have a plan to monitor the EFA revenue, and we can hopefully use some of that money to offset a shortfall that we expect to have on the Education Finance Act. So we really want to look at spending that money until the end of the year, I think we look at all the revenue categories to see whether we have a surplus or if we have a deficit. Typically, what we do, if we have some excess interest revenue, it either falls into the general fund balance, or we'll move some over to the building fund account, because we have a fair amount of money on deposit right now, based on that 8% money, asserting interest as well.
Could you let us know where this money's gonna be applied at the end of the year?
I can, that's fine.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If there's no other questions, the other item I've had tonight is the first reading of 2018, '19 General Fund Budget. This first draft is a really rough draft, it's a lot that hasn't been decided in the legislature, and we're kind of at a late date for decisions not being made. For example, the basic cost is different in the House and the Senate version of the budget. The House kept the basic cost the same, Senate increased it $60 to $2,485, it should be $3,018, so you can see how underfunded the Basic Education Finance Act program is by the legislature. Two different property indexes, the House maintains the property index used from FY14, Senate changed to a new qualifying definition of property, which results in less students in our district, qualifying it in property status. Big thing that hasn't been decided is teacher pay increase, the House has 2% with the step, the Senate has 1% with the step increase. So those things are impacting the budget that we'll finalize at about third reading. The budget that I'm sharing with you tonight... The budget that I'm sharing with you tonight, speaking of that chair...
Mr. Bowden, answer your question. The House has required a 2% increase for our teachers and a 1% for step increase. Correct? Which of the two can the board do? I know we can increase, can we increase 3% or 4% if the board decides to do so? You can always increase, that's what I'm saying. You can always keep more than what the House or Senate is requiring.
Well, you can, but what the Senate and the House, they set a minimum teacher salary schedule, not a minimum, not a maximum. So you have to meet the minimum state mandate. But typically, if you go beyond that, you go with the local supplement that's added to the EFA and EI and that. The other point is, if you wanted to do that, because Orangeburg County has a uniform teacher salary schedule, all the other districts, the other two districts, would have to agree to use that change teacher salary schedule. Basically, there's a fiscal commission that decides if they need what teacher salary schedule is for the county. To answer your question, yes, but this board just doesn't have the unilateral authority to go up and beyond because of the requirement to have a uniform salary schedule in the county.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Although you have, you know, you would have some problems with teachers with different degrees and wouldn't that...
Mr. Stevens.
I said with teachers with various degrees. That would also put a hardship on the local board too, right? With doctors and 30 hours plus and...
Yeah, there is variation between the different degrees and years of experience, but that variation is common among all the three districts.
Right.
In other words, if you had a doctorate degree with five years of experience, you'd make the same amount of money, whether you're talking three, four, or five. You had a BA degree with two years of experience, you'd make the same amount of money in three, four, and five. So, just ma'am, there is a variation between the salary schedule, but even within the varying degrees and years of experience, they're all the same with three.
Who would take that on the local or the state, like years of previous degrees?
Well, for the minimum amount, the 1%, that the Senate proposes, comes from the Education Finance Act. So the state would pay for that. The step increase, the district would have to pay for.
Thank you.
All right, the letter that I shared with you, this first draft of the proposed General Fund Budget, the general salary budget, pretty much has everything that everybody asks for. So the amount of expenditures is fairly high until we go back and start prioritizing what we're going to actually fund. Typically, we have a public hearing at second reading, but because second reading is scheduled for May 8, we don't have a 15-day window to advertise the public hearing. So what I'm proposing is that we just have the public hearing in June, when we have third reading. And if we have some issues that come up, we still have a couple of weeks in the month to address those. But by law, you have to have 15 days before you can have a public hearing, it might be advertised. So we don't have a window of time for that. The budget that we put together for the revenue comes to $64,205,500.
Madam Chair. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Mr. Bowden, having the auditor's comments, a public meeting on the third, having on the third reading, I would just ask Dr. Washington, known as on the second reading, so if we can do that, I mean, that's...
Negative, third reading?
Yes, sir. If there's anything requiring, since we so normally have on the second reading, that's any law that says, so we have the flexibility to go to the third reading if we so choose.
That's right. You just have to have one, doesn't matter if it's first, second, or third.
Okay. And the only reason I ask that question, because we used to have a normal second reading, so I just want to make sure that everything's working.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good, okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The budget that we're presenting has revenues of $64,205,569. And this was out without the use of any fund balance or transfer from building funds. The requested expenditures is $72,853,201. And that's based on the school and park budgets that were submitted to the finance office. So right now, at first reading, we're $8,647,632 out of balance. Last year, at first reading, we were right at about 4 million dollars out of balance, and we ended up using transfer from the building fund and fund balance to balance the budget, where we were out of balance about 3.2 million. So what I'm telling you is, when we hit the second reading, and we kind of get together and prioritize what we're going to fund, that deficit number should come down. But right now, this is pretty much, well, we use the Senate version of the budget too, which is a 3.7%, I mean, 2% plus 1.7% step. So it'll come down to the Senate version of the teacher salary schedule, they use the 1%. So there's a lot of variables that have to take place. But the second reading, I don't think the conference committee even met this week. So, you know, until they get together and report out the budget, it's kind of hard for us to tie down teacher salary schedules and all the expenditures from Act 13. In any event, I just wanted to share that with you.
Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Bowden, the out-of-balance figure is $8,647,632. And you indicated that for advice each school is that they're budgeted, and there was no consideration given to make it an adjustment at this point.
This point.
But there will be an effort to reduce the expenditures and bring more alive the revenue.
Right. And every year, at the first reading, is usually what happens, I mean, the bunches that we get, there's everyone asking for the maximum amount of everything, just load it in the budget.
Wish that.
Three months, and then we begin to do everything else with that. So also included is, if you would share, I don't know the total amount, if you were, if the House or Senate were, like I said, the teachers have to get a certain kind of money, but the maximum amount, that is included in the figure as well, to sort of like over space there.
But there will be a lot of effort to bring this...
Yes.
...this goal...
Yes.
...to the revenue expenses.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stevens.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bowden, I think you probably did answer what's got me, is the projected revenue, if you use the Senate for...
Okay.
There's also conversations today not concurring, which simply means that the subcommittee or a committee of three from the House and a committee of three from the Senate will get these proposals together and come up with something, hopefully, before the new adjourn date, which is the last of May instead of June, and was in the past. There appears to be some conversation that this is going to be, you know, battle for the task, and we will probably have nothing from them until the following June. So maybe just, as Mr. Gage mentioned, please, we go back and look at principles, or I know you guys know everything that you can get, but I think we will have to be fiscally responsible and do the best we can.
I think the big part of the budget we'll have to look at is the number of FTEs, because that's where the savings will be powered and benefit.
Now, fringe, what was the percentage increase in fringes on the teacher's edge this year? Do you know what else happened?
Off the top of my head, I know that retirement went up another 1%, and the Senate has money in there to pay for that. Health insurance went up, I want to say 4%, but it all went up on the employer side. Money was allocated to take care of the employee's side, so they wouldn't have a cost increase to their health insurance. But I can share that with you at the next board meeting, tell you exactly what the percentage increase was and how much the cost was implemented.
Thank you.
First section of the first draft of the budget has to do with the student enrollment and the pupil teacher ratios. This information comes from the Human Resources Department. And basically, did a snapshot of the 2017-18 enrollment and the projected 2018-19 enrollment, what percentage increase would be, number of FTEs was increase or decrease. So, I'm sorry, this thing is too short. I'll go through each one of those pages, but if you look through there and you have questions, I'd be glad to have your answer for you. I'll go through one of the larger increases, because of Howard Middle School, that they have an increase of 88, projected growth of 88, and six new FTEs per teacher. Section two has to do with the local revenue projection. Basically, according to Act 388, we could increase our current mills by 2.13%. Basically, that's the increase in the Consumer Price Index. Orangeburg County had a negative growth factor, so we don't get any percentage increase on growth. Based on that, we could go up 4.14 mills. You can go back and recapture one year, we did that, we could increase by 1.99 mills for a total of 6.13 new mills, we could generate about $612,000. On the next page, it's calculation of the value of a mill. We have a value of a mill of about $99,877, and this is with the owner occupied property taken out, and the fee in lieu of taken out. And on pages three and four, we just put together the state partner revenue sets base for our district. Didn't receive anything from the auditor, Mr. Quigley, of the judge. On page five, the letter from Mr. Bowden.
Either pass, whether there be any discrepancy in what the county and the state have assessed?
There's been a little bit of discrepancy, that's why we've got to go with state revenue figures, and we do it based on history of the value of the mill we calculate. But we, once we get the information from the county, we just go based on what the value is, based on the tax collections that we generate, we kind of back into it.
But if my memory serves, right, if the last couple of years, the state has been more fringing the town.
Well, you can look on page three. I mean, the state has a total adjusted assessment of $182,240,367. Take that figure, back out the owner occupied property, which is $44,486,822, take out the fee in lieu of, using an 85.7% collection rate, it comes out to, right, at $99,876. Because the collection rate is something that varies from year to year, depending on the economy. So basically, back in to the 99,876, the value of a mill that we're comfortable with based on past budget views.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bowden, you said in reference to our middle school, that we're going to need an addition of six teachers. Does that have any indication that those six teachers will be paid out of Title I funds?
I'm not sure where they'll be paid from. That's something that, actually, when we do the budget, we look at the teachers that can be paid for Title I, and if they're allowable, and they'll be charged a Title I, but if they're not allowable, they can't supply them, so it's just, you know, I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, this is, this is what I was saying, if these six teachers, let's say, three out of the six, is going to be paid out of Title I funds, then it will impact this first page.
Right, I mean, if they're not charged to the general fund, then the general fund budget won't be as much. And that's one of the reconciliations things we have to do, not just with Title I, we have to look at special ed, IDEA, have to look at the at-risk money. Remember that $20 million we have in special revenue? We analyze all those accounts to see how that will impact the general fund we put the budget together.
And if that's the case, even have the positive effect on this deficit here of $8.68.
Right, we can go back and look at people that may be paid out of the general fund that can go into a project. But it works both ways. There may be people in a project that the project can't pay anymore, that has to come into the general fund, so it's not all one way.
I understand, I understand. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Leighton.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bowden, what was the $6.13 mill to be worth to a taxpayer? Do we know?
How much they would have to pay in taxes.
How much?
About $24 on a $100,000 home.
Okay, thank you.
All right, on page six is the EFA projection, and Mr. Stevens does, based on the Senate version, using the basic cost increase of $60, and the new property index. And page seven has the other state revenue included in the budget. Page eight is the calculation for the amount of money that would be paid to the charter school. I have looks like $3,537,463 to go to the charter school of 18, 19 years. Page eight is the calculation for the amount of money that would be paid to the charter school. It looks like three million, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars, the code that the charter school, eighteen-nineteen. Section three is the actual number. On page one, under the local revenue, is projected a five-hundred-thousand-dollar increase under Oklahoma, intermediate local revenue, a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar decrease. Went down on regulars too from other LEAs, this is the tuition that we charge to folks that come to the technology center, and that number's been down. Went up on interest, sixty thousand dollars, that may be conservative, depends on how fast we spend down the eight percent money. Other local revenues with the same, under state revenue, a decrease of twenty-one-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. And right now, you can see the projected decrease in EFA of five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. So, this may go up a little bit, I'll say just, our EFA funding on the one-hundred-and-thirty-five day report. Two big items at the bottom of the page, last year, we transferred from the building fund one-point-seven million, and we used two-point-two-nine-four million from the fund balance. So, those had to be a budget at this time, so revenue is sixty-four million, two-hundred-and-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars.
Mr. Bowden, a little question, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Bowden, a little point back, the vocation of projected budget for two thousand eighteen-nineteen is two million, fifty-five thousand, it's less than. Why is that, why are we indicating we don't have less than four hundred thousand? What, what, what if you, what if you review that's going to indicate this will be four-hundred-thousand less?
Because at the forty-fifth day of the seventeen-eighteen year, we have less students in ATM coded to vocational than we had at the seventeen-eighteen year end. So, if you have less students in ATM, your money's going to go down.
So, we already, we already know that?
We already know that based on our forty-five day count.
Okay.
I don't think the one-hundred-and-thirty-fifth day counts very, very much with regard to kindergarten through vocational. I will point out that people, students go between vocational and high school, so if you look at the high school numbers on this report, you see it goes from one-point-two million on nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight, so you get an increase of two-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand dollars. So, it helps offset that loss in the vocational category.
Okay. So, you're saying when you get the one-hundred-and-thirty-five day count, your decision is made based on what the upcoming years will look like? And you're also saying that by one-hundred-and-thirty-fifth day, it's not going to change that much, because by forty-fifth day, things will establish, that's what you're saying, right?
Right, typically, the state takes the average daily membership three times a year, forty-fifth day, and then the ninetieth day, and the one-hundred-and-thirty-fifth day. One-hundred-and-thirty-fifth day is the count that determines what your funding will be for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen year. So, that's the, that's the count you want to get right. This two thousand eighteen-nineteen projection is based on the forty-five day, because the state didn't have the one-hundred-and-thirty-fifth day count when this thing was printed. So, I know that the EFA money's going to go up a little bit based on the profit turned in on the one-hundred-and-thirty-fifth day.
Okay, that was my concern. I thought maybe, based on what you were saying, I was in an impression that, that could, that could be a possibility of an increase.
Yeah, there's a possibility. But then again, it may be impacted if the House version of the budget goes through and they don't increase the base student cost. But the base student cost stays what it is now, and there goes the increase, and you get the same amount of VFA money that you got in your report. So, and there's still a couple of things in play that will actually determine our allocation of it.
All right, so it's a possibility things could look much better closer to here.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Bowden, you probably don't, will answer what I'm going to ask, question, and probably direct to Dr. Cash Green and Mr. Davis. When I'm browsing through the elementary schools, and I know over the last couple of years, Marshall has had a, not Marshall, excuse me, Marshall has a high number of state students that are looking at, now, looking at Sheridan with a projected thirty-four, and then, a couple of miles away, there's Marshall, well, every, with a projection of one. Are we capturing everybody, or why is there such a disturbance?
Those are self-contained classes, so those are the classrooms that the numbers of children have, and self-contained scripts, they're taking that out, and are the regular projections for the great one. So, Melchamp has the number of self-contained classes, Sheridan has self-contained classes.
Mr. Bowden, Madam Chair, is there any possibility this is on the record, Stevens or the records? In other words, Mr. Stevens asked a question, I would like to know, could Mr. Grant answer his question, could it be on the record as well? Because I don't, you can hear what he said?
Yeah. Can you all hear him?
I just want to make sure that it's, it's answered.
She hasn't, she hasn't...
She hasn't, okay, all right, thank you.
One-hundred-and-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, with requested expenditures of seventy-two million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-one dollars, with the understanding that expenditures will be addressed, modified, and reduced before the second reading, because the amount is out of balance by eight million, six-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. Question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? The affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Bowden.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're now going to conduct the cash... Instructional Services update.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening. Members of the Board, Dr. Washington, tonight, the Office of Instructional Services would like to share with you several action items as indicated on your agenda. I may ask Mr. Davis to come at this time, he'll present to you policy IJNDAA.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Trustees. I'd like to bring to your attention the policy IJNDAA for first reading and approval. Basically, what this policy is, the district may utilize technology courses as part of its educational program to increase accessibility and flexibility in the delivery of instruction to our students. In addition to our regular classroom-based instruction, students in the district may are accredited through an accredited virtual online program, such as Virtual South Carolina, Virtual SC, as well as, we have our own program in-house, Apex. And as such, one of the things we have to do in order for this policy to take place is that we have to submit a, use a, submit a proficiency-based application to the state of South Carolina, which you'll hear that later on tonight. What I would like to also bring to your attention for administrative consideration is that all technology-delivered programs, of course, is offered by the district, must be consistent with state academic standards and instructional goals that's set forth by the state of South Carolina. In addition, these online learning programs, they are also aligned with National Clearing House NCA regulations for athletes, and those...
Also capture students who have been expelled and is, at my brother's keeper, and well, as well as those students who are not, or have been expelled totally from the, from the district.
Well, in order for our student to, one of our students, if our students are expelled from our school district, that means they're expelled from a public school in the state of South Carolina. So, as such, this program will not necessarily be available to them, because they're not our students anymore. Now, and what it, what it, what it, what it does lend itself to is that if kids are out, and I listed some of those things for your kids that are, our students that are homebound students, medical homebound students, students with extenuated circumstances where we need to personalize their learning, to give them opportunities to learn outside of the school, because school may not necessarily be the best place for them, they'll still be our students, but we can personalize their learning opportunities, but expelled students...
Bowden, for hosting us again, doing a wonderful job here at the Revlon Primary School. And also, probably, for the final time, I need to do this one more time, and she's probably going to be upset, but I just cannot thank Dr. Cash Green enough for taking this district and leading the effort for advanced ed, planning, getting it off the ground, keeping us informed, our dates, when things needed to happen, and I really just wanted to publicly say that to her while she's sitting here in the audience, and I know she doesn't like it, but I have to do.
Thank you very much.
It was, it was the whole instructional team, and also the efforts of Bill Clark, our PR department, Harvey, I don't know if he's still here or not, for getting the video done for us, but it was a monumental task, and I'm so thankful that it's finally over. So, we should be getting the results back in about the next week and a half, and when we get those in, I'll be sharing it with the Board, and we'll also have another community morning meeting of the district that we had before prior to leading up to our visit. So, Cynthia Cash Green, thank you very much.
Dr. Bowden. I would ask you, how, yes, Ms. Carson, Mr. Stevens, and I, when we, when we, all of the Board, when we go to meetings, workshops, after state, we can think about, say, our district is ahead because of you doing these things, and also with the IT department, you don't know how phenomenal you are, we go places, we are ready. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item of business is executive session, and there is a need for executive session to discuss, are here, contract renewal recommendations, as well as personnel recommendations and personnel matters. So, may I have a motion that we convene to executive session?
Madam Chair, Ms. Carson, I would like to leave to executive chair. Executive.
No, Madam, questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign, the affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. Thank you.